Please ask everybody to mute themselves unless they're gonna be speaking. Mr. Guzman have noted you will be talking on item number four. Once we approach that item, then we will be notifying you so you could speak for your two minute comment.
Hold on, Henry, want me to call back?
Hold on, Mike.
Alright, I'll hold on, I'll hold on, Mike.
Hey, Norma. Can you rename the call in user so we know who's talking?
Mr. David Guzman?
No, no, rename the call in user. On the host, you can rename the user.
User number three?
I believe he is.
And Norma, I think you have to mute your phone while we're talking or we get that echo and all that crazy sound. Chief did it last week.
Okay, Mayor, we're ready?
I just got notice from Councilman Chavez, he's trying to join the meeting, he's having some difficulty. I'm just gonna give a few more minutes for everybody to get on their mic. Can you check in and see who all's on here? Let me see. We've got Mr. Enriquez, Mr. Garcia's on. Louis on, Eddie shows that he just connected. Any word from Mr. Palomares, Ms. Gonzalez?
Earlier, but he was in another conference. This was at 5:30.
No, what the fuck happened here?
Mr. Chavez.
Larry, right here.
Ben, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we could.
Oh, yes, we can hear you.
Just getting ready to get started. I am messaging Henry, I see that he's replying back, let me just see what he says real quick. Ms. Norma, are you ready?
Yes, sir, we're ready.
Waiting to hear back from the town attorney since the first agenda item is that.
Hey, Ben, we can go ahead and start and then skip until Henry gets here?
Let me see, I'm going over some of the agenda items. What we can go ahead and do is, Mr. Weeks, did you go ahead and get the copy of the updated factuals?
I do.
That way we can go ahead and just go over and go on into item two. But we'll go ahead and call it. It is 6:45, April 27th. The duly called regular council meeting of the town of Anthony, Texas, posted in accordance with section 551.002 and 551.041 of the Open Meetings Act of the Texas Government Code. Public participation during the portion of the agenda for public comment is limited to that portion only, except that if the citizens' comments relate to a topic or subject covered under an agenda item, the citizen shall wait to speak until the item, the agenda item comes up for discussion. At all other times during the council meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the presiding officer. Ms. Norma Gonzalez, can you go ahead and give us a quorum check, please?
Yes, Mayor, put them weak. Mayor, put them weak?
Yes.
Okay, so I just noticed that once I mute somebody, once you speak, even if I unmute you, you need to unmute. Make sense? When I mute somebody, then even if you unmute yourself, I won't be able to hear you. So everybody, please remember to mute yourselves.
I still can't hear anything.
Councilman Alvaro? Councilman Chavez?
I did, I already fixed the speakers.
Councilman Chavez? Councilman Chavez?
Sorry, my bad.
And Mayor Romero?
Here, and if I can just add really briefly, ladies and gentlemen, for transparency purposes, please do not use the side or the chat box on the council. Just go ahead and if you guys need to try and address somebody, just state their name or speak openly. That way, you know, there's no issues by utilizing that chat box, we shouldn't be using it, okay? Go on, Ms. Gonzalez.
We have a quorum?
Alright, moving on. Open forum for the public, limited to two minutes. Ms. Gonzalez, were you reached out by anybody or did anybody contact you in regards to speaking in open forum on any items that are not currently on the current agenda?
No, sir, we only received what we to open for open forum for which that would be Mr. David Guzman, and he will take on item number four.
We'll go ahead and allow him his two minutes prior to the agenda item. But other than that, there is nobody else signed up for a public forum?
No, sir.
Okay, please let the record reflect. Moving on to moving on to item five, review and action on minutes of special council meeting, July 1st, 2019. Any questions or comments from any of the council members?
I move to approve.
I have a motion made by Mr. Weeks, do I have a second? I'll go ahead and second. Motion seconded by Councilman Garcia to approve the meeting minutes of council meeting, July 1st, 2019, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, review and action on minutes of regular council meeting for March 25th, 2020. Any comments or questions from the council? Do I have any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So move to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Garcia. Do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
Motion made by, seconded by Councilman Weeks, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously.
Mayor? Eddie is, Eddie cannot hear us through his system. I don't know if we can text him and ask him to do the call in so he can listen to what we're saying and talk to us, but Eddie cannot hear us.
I'm gonna Eddie, is that you? Somebody's pushing the feedback or got two mics open in there.
Yeah, he posted in the chat one minute ago that he still cannot hear us. So maybe we need to give him the phone in so he can listen and talk.
I think he had called in, that's why we got the real bad feedback, I saw him on the video. He dialed in at the same time, so that's why we got that reverb. I see him online as far as I think with his phone, correct, Norma?
Yes, sir.
He says he's logged on through his phone, but that he still can't hear.
Okay, if you're hearing me, I'm gonna reset my phone and the laptop.
Okay, we can hear you, Eddie.
Let me do that and then I'll get right back.
Can you hear us, though? I think what we'll do, guys, is since we already do have quorum, we'll just continue on with the meeting. And when Mr. Chavez logs on and gets that situated, we can acknowledge him in the chat. Or in the meeting, okay? Okay, moving on to item seven, review and action on minutes of special council meeting, April 20th, 2020. Any comment? If no comment, do I have a motion on the table?
So move to approve.
I have a motion made by Mr. Garcia, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Alvaro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eight, discussion and action on the following new business. Our legal attorney, Henry Palomares, has asked if we move item one to the end of the today's agenda items, as he's still wrapping up with his other board meeting. Do I have a motion to momentarily table item one until the end of the meeting?
I moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Garcia, seconded by Councilman Weeks, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion to table passes. Item two, discussion. Eddie, can you hear us? We can hear you.
I can't see them, I'm messaging them here. Nope.
Eddie, we can hear you.
I can't hear.
Norma, go ahead and mute him. Technical difficulties, guys, this is what happens, but all in all. Moving on to item two, discussing consideration and action on a second financial budget quarterly report. This has my name on it, but we still closely regard Mr. Weeks as our financial guru. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to him and also let everybody know that we also do have David, who is our town accountant on the meeting as well. So if you guys have any questions, direct them to Mr. Weeks and then after that, we can discuss this with David if necessary, but the floor is all yours, Mr. Weeks.
Ben, then tell me that you're getting too much feedback in your computer and just
Okay, so the first thing I'll go over is the general fund budget comparison. Okay, it's four pages. We did do a review last week with Ben, Norma, Valerie, David and I. On the general fund, there were some things that weren't fixed. Chief, were you in that meeting too?
I went in at the tail end, sir.
Okay, okay, so one of the things, Chief, and David, that we were trying to figure out was line item 4900 at the bottom of page one, the Anthony ISD reimbursement. That money is higher than it should be and we need to get that clarified. So we also found and David has fixed and our payroll system was still showing a couple of our people coded as far as their healthcare goes to water sewer that were actually supposed to go to general fund and now that was all corrected and fixed. So that 50%, you know, we should be at 50% for those items and they're all corrected. On the general fund, there was some small things that had to do with computers and things that needed to be fixed. We also noted that the interest in thinking was below what it should be and so that was corrected. And then and then our sales tax was a little low for March compared to last year, which was to be expected based on the fact that how many businesses do we have closed, Norma or Ben?
Ms. Garcia, Ms. Gonzalez?
That we have closed for right now, sir, for the COVID or that the business from?
For the COVID.
One second, sir, I don't have that number with me.
I think you're Ben, wasn't it like 28 to 30?
Yeah.
Thirty businesses, and then we also found out that several businesses, you know, usually kind of wait till February, March to pay their business licenses and with everything going on, it kind of slipped through the cracks, they're gonna be followed up on with those, is that a right statement, Ben?
Yes, Chief did follow up with a few of those businesses that hadn't submitted their business licenses yet. That were still open and considered essential, so those individuals immediately did come in and, you know, fill out pull out their business license. There are some others, though, that have remained closed. So administratively, we have not, you know, been hard on them to get their business licenses in because at this moment in time, you know, we're not sure or even determined if they will be opening up anytime soon, even though Governor Abbott did start or is going to be implementing phase one of his reopening but at that point, I think we'll settle up with them once we get everything opened up. At this point, we're not gonna have them incur any unnecessary hardship.
Okay, and then, so the general fund, we saw some things that we're gonna be cautious of and we're gonna watch. We saw where, you know, we pretty much have gotten all of our property taxed, but we don't. But we're starting to see that dip in sales tax. We also know, if you guys remember, and I forget, it's that little gas station across from the pilot? They're across from Burger King. It's like the largest seller of beer in El Paso County for stores because of Wet n Wild. We also know that that's not gonna be the case this year because Wet n Wild has already told Ben that they're not gonna open up on time and they're gonna make a decision wind-bend to see if they're gonna open it up at all this year.
We'll go with Governor Abbott's reopening plan. They're hoping maybe late May, early June, but if they're not allowed to open, I don't think they would proceed any later than the end of June or starting of July to open up just because of the initial cost that it takes to to open back up and start up again. So they've limited all their staff, minimized projects and, you know, they're just waiting to see kind of just like we all are on how certain things are developing.
Okay, so that's for general fund, so things look really good there. David's really taking care of that, done a good job on our budgets, working with Valerie and Norma. And, you know, if there's something, what I really like, guys, and this is so refreshing, that when we point out something isn't right, it gets fixed and then it's never wrong again. And so that's, if you know the history of the things we went through with budgets, then, you know, we'd see the same mistakes over and over and over and we don't see that anymore. So going to the water sewer budget, which is three pages, and it was page 19, 20, 21 in our packets, the things that we want to point out. One, just right off the bat to let everybody know, we've already used up 100% I believe of our contingency line item.
No, that was incorrect, it is we've used up 100% on the
capital improvements.
Capital improvements and the water supplies and materials, line item 7217.
Thank you, Ben.
Welcome.
So all of that and all of our, not contingency, but our capital improvement funds that we had saved from last year are gone now, they've been all used up. Second, if you guys look at the very first page, this is where we're gonna talk mostly or the main three things. Line item 4510, line item 4570, which is reconnect fees, and line item 4722, which is late fees. On water sales, 4510, March was our first month where we should have shown a 20% increase in our water bill. So our average had been 50, 49, 54, 48. So we were expecting to see somewhere in that 55,000 range to maybe even 60. And actually, our March went down. February was 48.3, March was 45.661. We did some checking and compared it to last year and I don't have the number of units in front of me, I left that paper at home. Maybe Norma or Ben does, but March of last year, we used do you have the number, Ben, in front of you?
For March March, well, I have what we build out, so that was 144,000. But that was including the sewer in our team.
Yeah, we built out 144,000. Well, bottom line is, we looked at the numbers and our use was like 10% higher than last year's number and that makes sense because more people are at home because of all this stuff. Now, but the problem is, we have roughly 50-plus people that not only aren't paying late, they're not paying at all. So we were expecting 55,000 for water sales roughly, in that range, 54, 55, and we got a little over 45. So again, last year, we had less use and more money, even though we didn't have a rate increase. This year, we had more water used and we got less income from it and we were expecting more. So that's a trend that we probably will see the next few months with the COVID-19. But when, yeah, so when you're expecting an increase due to our recent increase, it took effect and was gonna show on this one. We're roughly $9,000 to $10,000 short this month, just in water sales. Then you go down to, and this is the trend, right? 45.70 reconnect fees were usually 2,000, 1,900, you know, we averaged around 1,200. We had $100 of reconnect fees because we're not charging. We're not charging the fees right now, you waived the late fees and then disconnect fees.
Correct, we waived all the late fees, we waived all the disconnect fees. The 100 bucks that we got was, I think, retroactive, right, Ms. Gonzalez, from a previous month? But in reality, we'd be seeing, we're seeing actually $0 on the disconnects and $0 on the late fees. And I think both of them together would average us about three, four to five grand a month.
Yeah, between reconnect and late fees, we would average about 2, 2, 400 and we got 400. And going back, line item 4551, which is also our sewer sales, that's low too, just like 4510. So our sewer sales, we got more people at home using water because everybody's at home. Nobody's watering their grass. Our sewers should have been up, not down, and it's because people aren't paying. So we're expecting an increase of 10%. We had a decrease of five to 10%. So on four major items in water sewer. Plus, then remember that we are maxed out on our capital funds, capital improvement funds and water supplies and materials. Plus, then remember that we are maxed out on our capital funds, capital improvement funds, and water supplies and materials. So those are the main things to point out.
And and one thing to add on to what Mr. Weeks was saying about the water. Remember, last year, we were two hundred thousand short of what was budgeted and projected for water sales. What we also did is we moved over the ladies that were on the water. You know, the three staff members that we had, which made about seventy seven thousand dollars of that budget. We ended up moving them over from water and sewer to the general fund. To give the water and sewer a little cushion to kind of bounce back and give us a solid, you know, standard. Of what to expect with water and sewer this year. But, you know, this current pandemic has kind of, you know. Been a little problematic in getting a good, solid reading on where the numbers would be. But that's something that everybody needs to to be aware of and something that, you know, we're handling administratively. And also continuing to keep an eye on financially.
Money's gonna be recouped eventually.
I'm sorry, Louis, the the, okay, so here's the thing. If we're not, we're not charging and we're not backdating the late fees or the reconnect, so those aren't coming back. And a trend has happened over the many years here in Anthony, especially with renters. When when renters don't pay, after three or four months, renters tend to disappear. And we never get the money. So, yeah, there's gonna be some of this money that will be coming in, but not all of it.
That makes sense.
And right now, what is part of the unknown is, you know, even though Governor Abbott is implementing phase one of some of the reopening. We don't know what kind of economical impact this is doing to us in the long run. You know, if this happens for a few months, are we, you know, gonna ask for all the residents the following month to pay everything in full? You know, ideally not. So it'd be something where we'd be working on them, either doing, you know, a three month stretch, four months. In order to break out, you know, what is due, so you can, you know, get them to pay what is owed. But not also, you know, break the bank when certain individuals are trying to bounce back, for sure.
Yeah, I was reading up on that, that starting this Friday, he's gonna have businesses open at twenty five percent capacity. So that's what he thinks, or Friday. Retail businesses and whatnot will be opening Friday.
Yeah, and like I said, one of the things you need to be aware of is even though in the rest of Texas is seeing a downward curve. Unfortunately, here in El Paso itself, we are continually gradually and exponentially. Doubling and increasing our numbers of COVID patients. So we're still two weeks away from our expected peak. And we're over seven hundred, almost closer, I think surpassed eight hundred cases now. So. Even though I think we may be opening little by a little, I think the general public will still be cautious. And taking precautions in going out or continuing to stay home. So that's something that, you know, we are also looking to forecast and not ideally going to expect a a large boom. But, you know, we we have to see what's also happening within our region. To kind of guesstimate where 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 we're gonna be heading or what we can be looking to to expect in the coming months, for sure.
That's correct. Just to follow all the rules mandated by the county and state and, of course.
And and to add a little bit more to what Ben said, the state of Texas as a whole. Reached its top number for cases in one day on April tenth. And so that's where, when he's saying we've had seventeen days of decrease, whenever, once, once you don't go over a high point for seventeen days. That's when they consider it a decline and and successful. The problem with our county is, we just had our largest number increase Saturday. We don't know if this is the beginning of our seventeen days or if we're still going up. Because we had seventy four cases on on Saturday. And so. We're we're kind of in worse shape than than the rest of the state.
Anything else, Mr.?
Let me ask you a question. Yes. Is there any any funds available from the state or federal that could help us oversee this pandemic?
There are certain things, Joe, that we're looking into, but I always like to say. Just like some of the payroll protection plans have already been exceeded and they're actually looking to open up more funding for it. I don't count my eggs before they've hatched, Mr. Garcia. So I'd rather work with what we have than try and justify and work with what we don't have.
Yeah, because they're they're focusing on the medical. We applied for one. It was close to a million dollars, and that was like a couple of weeks ago. That was all for telemedicine type. Activity, nothing to do with anything else.
And a lot of the stuff that they're doing, they're trying to target and help out smaller businesses. But just with the amount of people that have applied for unemployment with everything that they're doing. I mean, it it's getting, it it's getting up there. And, you know, even like Senator Rampal said, is, you know, continuing to borrow money and stuff and bailout is not going to be. The solution or the one all solution for everything. You know, we need to try and start gradually getting, you know, things going again, but, you know, that's gonna take a little bit of time. But does anybody else have anything else from council to add to the budget, Mr.? Oh, speaking, you know, now. I got good news for you, ladies and gentlemen, the drum roll. But, you know, with all the hiccups and the turnover in staff and, you know, the disaster that we had with. You know, some of the former town clerics and administrative staff. I am happy to report that the audit for seventeen and eighteen is done. They're currently putting together the report. They're finalizing a few numbers. If I'm correct, David. And then they'll be getting ready to present to us in the next couple of coming weeks. Any questions? Any comments from council?
I don't have anymore. Ben, I would clarify too, you know, a lot of people heard that businesses are gonna open starting May first. But he did specifically say not hair salons and and stuff like that too, which is. You know, we of our thirty businesses, that's what, ten or fifteen of our businesses? That they're still waiting on those certain types of businesses and, right?
Yeah, some of the smaller mom and pop shops, like the smaller restaurants, there, some of the movie theaters and stuff. I mean, here in town. You know, majority were those hair salons and stuff that were that were that were. But basically, they're only gonna be coming back at twenty percent, twenty five percent capacity for their dining areas and stuff like that. And with some of the smaller businesses that we have. They're small to begin with, so that, you know, that's not gonna be really much of an increase and probably not much of an increase for them as well. But that that's pretty much it. Moving on, any other further discussion? No action taken on item two. Give me one quick second, guys. I'm just waiting to follow up, see if I hear back from Mr. Pablo Myers.
He's on already.
All right.
Mayor, my apologies. I was tied up in another Zoom meeting, board meeting, so my apologies.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go on to item three. Discussion, consideration, and action on a hundred dollar reduction in pay. If I may correct and amend this, Mr. Weeks. Since Mays has already been paid out, payroll was due, and that was processed. I am recommending that we switch the deductions for June, July, and August. For the town council and mayor. Would that be okay, Henry? How would the formality be, Mr. Weeks?
I would just, I would just amend it to say for the next three, three months, that that'd be fine with me.
Is that okay, Henry?
Mayor, what I suggest is you address the agenda item the way it is and but then through discussion. Obviously, it'll come up just like you indicated, and then when they, when, if and when. A council member makes a motion, they can make the motion and include the the adjustment on the motion.
Sounds good, sir. Thank you very much. So moving on then, discussion, consideration, and action on a hundred dollar deduction in pay. For May two thousand twenty, June two thousand twenty, and July two thousand twenty for the town council and mayor presented by Mayor Proten Weeks.
Well, Mayor and Council, it's pretty simple. We have an agenda item to talk about lowering hours of our employees. And I think we should lead by example. We know it's gonna be a tight time. We know we're probably gonna see worse numbers next month, because that's when we'll see the full impact. But if we're going to consider this in the future for the employees, we should definitely consider it for ourselves first and 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 discuss it and talk about.
Sounds good. I like that idea. I'll go ahead and open up for any comments, councilmen?
I would like to just go ahead and go forward and make a motion to approve the. Reduction of a hundred dollars for June, July, and August. I mean, there's no, I don't think we really should need to discuss it. I mean, Sean's right, we should start with dollars and then go from there.
Good. I have a motion made by Mr. Chavez to approve the hundred dollar deduction for. June, July, and August of two thousand twenty. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Seceded by Councilman Garcia. All in favor? Motion, all approve, any, any against? Motion carries four to zero. And Ms. Norma, for the upcoming months, you can go ahead and take care of that. Moving on to item four. Discussion, consideration, and action on a reduction of hours for full time employees averaging between four to six hours per week. I'm gonna go ahead and open up for the public comment for Mr. Guzman. He had a statement that he'd like to make. So, Mr. Guzman, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
All right. The two minutes are yours, sir. You have the floor.
Good afternoon. David Guzman with ASME Local Fifty Nine. I'm bringing you this information regarding the agenda item that you guys have. To reduce. Four to six hours for employees. Now, this has been already done for the past two weeks. I don't know why is it that you all make a decision without bringing it into the into the council? Because this has already been done. Now, with that said. There is no backup on this item, on this agenda item on on online. If you guys have any, any information with you all. There is no backup online. So how, how can we in in the public go and see the backup if there's any backup on this? Again, this, there's no backup on this item where we could go in and actually print out the 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 backup on the item. Now. This is not the first time that things happen down at Town of Anthony that is done, and it's brought to the attention of the city council after the fact. I think with your attorney there available and and the rest of the the council. You guys want to make, want to make sure that you guys bring it up to the attention of the city council before it's done. And this item has been done, and employees have been taking time off for the past two weeks since April fourteenth. And you're bringing it up to the attention of the council right now. So we would like for you all to. Make sure that items are brought to your attention before they're done. Because under fair standards law, you really cannot take away any, any employee's. Monetary wages without their permission. So, again, right now with the COVID nineteen. We are aware that there is a, there is some some flexibility there to to reduce hours because of this, but. Like, like I say again, it was done without the approval of City of Town of Anthony's consent right now. You guys are making, gonna make a decision right now when it's already been done for the past two weeks. So please, I would like for that to be brought up to to the mayor and.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guzman, for your two minutes. They are up. Before we move forward with council discussion. I'm not sure how well Mr. Guzman is versed with the overall day to day activities and administrative duties. That are given to mayor, to council, the separation of duties. But there are a few things that I'd like to clarify for his benefit and also for councils. This was a long discussed item. We've had plenty of department head meetings. As Chief Anvicas and Mr. Hockes can attest to. And my person myself, unfortunately, there weren't unable to get on the line tonight. But this is something I well versed with our HR department. Now, for one, for Mr. Guzman's knowledge and just for his reference, for his information. In our policy book, in any company, any business, state, federal, local, private. There is nothing that will ever be put in policy that will dictate any guaranteed set of hours. That is by Department of Labor standards. The only statutes and. Documentation and verbiage that it states is the designation of employees. What they qualify as and when, in fact, they get paid time and a half. So under Department of Labor standards, any employee that works more than forty hours is guaranteed time and a half. But nowhere in any policy book or anything does it state that they're guaranteed forty hours. Second is, under the administrative duties here by my, by myself. And under any general business or any practicing municipality is hours, you know, can be based. And are contingent on financial availability. And also in by category and classification. So any employee considered full time is any staff member that works more than at or more or at least thirty hours per week. Anybody that is part time is considered working more than twenty or or a little bit over, but less than thirty. Now, as chief administration, it is, it is my call to make. In response to those economic woes due to the pandemic. We've all seen how El Paso and the city of El Paso is cutting one percent, furloughing employees and cutting certain, certain hours. Keep in mind, El Paso has over eight hundred thousand residents. And even with their projected losses, they're looking at over twenty six million in losses. We're a small municipality. I wish we had twenty six million to lose, but we don't. We have a budget of four point five million dollars. So ten to fifteen to twenty, thirty, forty, even sixty thousand dollars affects us greatly. So I want everybody, including Mr. Guzman, to understand. By reducing up to four to six hours from our employees. We have been able to not only temporarily issue some form of cost savings to the town. Because our overall budget is over ninety thousand dollars just for salaries a month. But what we are doing is, A, they are still designated as full time employees. Even with this temporary reduction in hours due to the amount of work. That we're doing here in town. We're no longer doing cutoffs. We're no longer issuing reconnects, disconnects. Basically, people have not paid their bills, so they're not out shutting water off. Two, or three. Under a lot of the employees and and classifications and licenses. not even a handful of the current staff that we have in Public Works have their sewer or their full water license. So when it comes to handling and managing the day-to-day uh duties and activities of the wastewater treatment plant, I think we only have whatever, two, three, staff members that are licensed. Sorry, I can't hear you, sir. Go ahead.
I can't hear him.
That's okay. But just for, for, for temporary notices also, in El Paso, the city street department is giving one week in and one week off to its staff members uh that are on the street department. So, a reduction of four to six hours is very minimal to the staff. Um, for one, they still maintain their full uh, in their, their full-time status. They do not get negatively impacted to their insurance coverage, their retirement, um, and any other benefits, uh, and all other benefits that the town offers. Right now, um, though the union might look to argue in keeping full-time statuses, what I am doing is I'm wanting to ensure that overall all the individuals, whether they belong to the union or not, are able to keep their jobs in the long run. I'm not going to be a reactive mayor and I will not wait to make the necessary actions until, or wait until we're faced with the hardship where we end up having to decide to either lay an employee off or significantly cut hours. Um, that's what I'm doing. Now, overall, we just wanna let everybody know, for transparency purposes, this is the reason why I'm coming to council to continue to agree and support my decision in supporting and reducing full-time employee hours, which does not just affect water, this goes for our court and our office girls as well. And as Mr. Weeks pointed out, we are taking a pay cut on the administrative side with council as well. Everybody needs to keep in mind, this is just temporary. As we watch the economic trend unfold and we see what comes in, what doesn't come in, we are then at that point gonna be given the opportunity to reevaluate and either continue going forward with the reduction in hours or moving employees or giving the employees back full-time statuses. As of right now, just to reiterate, we're limiting or not limiting, but in regards to the overall cost savings and the economic hardship, the town has stopped moving forward with certain quality of life projects. We have postponed the building of the Wildcat Park. We postponed the added additional lighting and park lighting for the Triangle Park in order to give us a buffer to be able to maintain certain expenses, certain needs, but also being able to ensure that we are able to keep the necessary staff on hand when needed. Now, that's pretty much that all I would have to say at this moment in time, and HR fully agrees. They've had the opportunity to look at the numbers. Um, and those of us that are involved administratively in reviewing the budgets and looking over the finances, this is a justified uh uh decision in moving forward with. And in fact, um, prior to the meeting, depending on where we see it going in the next couple of months or the next month, um, HR is actually requesting that I notify and ask council to support anywhere from four to up to eight hours in reduction. So, I'll go ahead and leave the floor open to comments from uh council. Um, if anybody would like to add anything or share some thoughts.
Okay, I, I have a question. Um, how is this gonna work? If you're gonna do it for everybody, how are you gonna do it for uh the chief, Eva and Norma, whoever's on salary?
So we have a step plan, we have a, we have a plan process, Mr. Chavez, and so we let everybody know this is the way it's gonna work out if we end up going to dire straits. Um, first and foremost, we're doing minimal reduction on the hours since there's limited amount of work. Even here at town hall, we have closed our doors to the public. So the office girls, even the court staff, is seeing limited activity because we're trying to minimize the potential exposures for COVID nineteen. So, the girls have been reduced four to six hours uh weekly um in order to accommodate that. And we've done that for the water and for courts. Court revenues in itself, we would average about fifty to sixty thousand a month. We're bringing in about thirty, thirty-five thousand. That's more than half. So, we've done the same thing all the way across the board. And what we're doing is we're starting with small increments from four to six up to eight hours, as long as they are not losing their full-time status. The second step that we're gonna move forward with doing, if in fact the revenue, the general sales tax is not coming in and we're seeing a larger increase in the overall revenue for the town, we are looking at bringing back down our administrative staff in regards to the department heads back to the required or a temporary status on their, on their annual salaries. So that would bring that down significantly. After that, our next plan is if that in fact happens, you end up having to A, cut your most, uh, your, your highest-paid employees that are not part of the department heads or administrative staff. And then finally, uh, if all else fails at that point, that's when we start uh cutting employees and doing layoffs or furloughs. So that's our step process and it's gonna be based on what we're seeing happen financially with the town. Um, and it is on an HR standpoint, that's the way they do it all the way across the board. So, there's no discrepancies, there's no discrimination. Yeah, everybody pretty much when it comes to this, um, they're on the table and we're gonna be putting certain things and certain items uh at that point, which at that point should be on the agenda and should be council decision on their table when it's time. Right now, the small uh measures that I've taken um to reduce overall uh salary expenses um has been just and uh in agreement with our HR department. Go ahead, Mr. Chavez. I mean, the way I see it, guys, you know, we were in, we were in this boat a few years ago when we made that, uh, when we approved my uh budget that I had worked on uh previously, where overall expenses were too high, salaries were too high, and we ended up having to cut uh some positions here in town. Um, moving forward with that, what we're trying to do now is curb and stop that possibility from happening. Um, right now, over the city, El Paso, there's some people that don't have jobs. And regardless of whether or not they belong to a union, um, there are hardships that are being uh faced and incurred to members of the uh, of the community. All over the world, all over the United States, there's individuals that have lost their jobs, seen more than four to six hours of reduction. They've been dropped down to part-time status. Um, at this point, like I said, we're doing small measures. We're still keeping the employees qualified under the, the legal designation, under the Department of Labor as full-time employees. They're not losing benefits, they're not losing insurance coverage or anything else. We're just saving a little on the uh overall um uh overall uh co- uh salary cost. And just as a reminder, it's not just water, it's not sewer. We have two open positions with the police department currently that we have not filled and are not looking to fill anytime uh soon until things start to balance out with this pandemic. Unfortunately, according and due to the collective bargaining agreements that we have with the police department, um, it's not as likely that I would be able to reduce hours on the police department side. But then again, you know, when you're separating it and, and, and stating it as it is, fire and police are the only ones that were, that have the right to collectively bargain uh for the city. That is not something that has been given to the Public Works Department here in Texas as of yet. Any comments, Mr. Garcia?
Ben, uh, e- even though we're gonna, that, that's a good plan that you worked out. Is there any way that we could help the employees by maybe giving them a letter stating that their, their hours have been cut and possibly their, their wages? To where they can go to the workers' compensation and, and get some of those wages?
So for one, Mr. Chavez, um, that responsibility is on the employee itself. Um, you've gotta keep in mind, those things are done by them. Once they send or the uh, uh, unemployment or any reduction of hours gets sent to us, um, as always, our town clerk and our HR department respond to those. Uh, but keep in mind, and this is something that people need to be aware of, I don't know if the exact number was in Texas or, or overall in the US, we have over three million people applying for unemployment benefits. Um, at this point, under legal standards and Department of Labor, I have not reduced more or I have not reduced the employees, the full-time employees to more than twenty percent of their overall income. So they do not qualify under Texas work, uh, um, workers, uh, uh, or Department of Labor uh to be able to qualify or apply for reduction in hours benefits. Um, so, you know, uh, three hours here and there can make up twenty, thirty, forty dollars. Um, that's still in essence, um, limited to what others in the, in the other cities and the other municipalities, and even here as the residents are, are, are having to endure. So, I think for now, you know, right now, we are all a team. We're having to look at this individually and holistically as a whole entity. Certain groups, certain special interest groups only want to look out for themselves. Um, but right now, I'm looking out for the entire the entire town, not only residents, but also employees. Um, and when I first was in office, um, that was one of the biggest complaints that we heard from residents is during the Obama presidency, when we did have uh economic hardships and the economy was crashing. Remember, here in town, none of those staff members or employees ever felt any of those ripples for a few years because we were still offering one hundred percent healthcare coverage and half of dependent healthcare coverage at the time. We were paying so much in overtime and salaries and benefits that nobody would have ever known that we were suffering economically, but our budget did and the numbers showed it. So, with maintaining fiscal responsibility and looking and making the decisions that I have to and that we have to as an administration, that is why I came to you, you know, for transparency purposes, to continue to support my efforts in maintaining our full staff, maintaining the benefits that they have and maintaining our budget as we see it uh taking shape and unfolding during this uh economic crisis and global pandemic. And like I said, guys, you know, moving forward, and I'm sorry to cut anybody off, remember, right now, I'm coming to you, asking you to let's shave a little off the top or, or not shave, uh, cause I've already done it and I can do that administratively, but I'm asking you to continue supporting me with this um as a council and whether we put together a resolution and move forward with it um or not. Um, I'm asking you guys and I'm coming to you guys for this because I'm not gonna speak up and state anything when I'm having to put or if we have to put on the agenda about cutting and pretty much letting go of employees because we did not do what we had to do financially to maintain our budget and the overall payroll.
Well, what I like to say about this is that uh, in regards to the court numbers, there was reports a bit not long ago that showed the, you know, the trend, and I saw that they are in line as to what they were last year. However, it doesn't mean that they're gonna get any better because of the ongoing Corona's issue. We know it's not gonna, it's gonna, it's not gonna stop until eventually, you know, we flatten that curve, it's still gonna continue. So, planning for something like this, I think it's important. I mean, for us, for the future, uh, as far as employees goes, because we don't, we can't predict the, what's gonna happen next. So, having those revenues available, I think it's important. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I'm hoping that you did those, did those recommendations to reduce the uh, the hours that you based it on, you know, tenure and of course seniority uh, and started going just down the line to see who needed to be cut.
Uh, unfortunately, with seniority or anything like that, um, the way we did it, uh, Henry, aside from the department heads, uh, everybody, our deputy town clerk, our water clerks, court clerks, uh, supervi- uh, uh, court supervisors and regular employees uh in regards to the water, everybody saw the uh half-day. We basically uh gave everybody an additional half-day off and took four hours uh from everybody all, all, uh, across the board.
Yeah, that's good. You know, it's, it goes, it runs across the board and it's fair. I think, I think, you know, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, and the way I look at it is, i- i- if we're all, you know, a team player, I wanted it to be fair across the board, you know. Uh, anybody that's in a supervisory position, higher up tenure or whatever, should be willing to put in that same amount um as somebody that's just a new hire. You know, um, we're gonna get through this together. We're facing this as a whole. Uh, and is there the potential for, for individuals to be cut that are on the low end and the high end? Yes, um, when it comes to making those HR decisions and stuff that we end up having to come to council for, we will if the need arises. Um, but as of right now, we're going flat across the board with, to everybody. Um, and then after that, uh, the way I see it, right on the next level, if we continue to go down, the, the, the biggest ones that will be impacted will be the department heads at that time. And then uh if things go, uh, take a turn for the worst, then that's when, you know, uh, decisions and serious decisions will be, have to be made. But it's all been planned out and already uh strategically uh looked at numbers-wise uh to present if it gets there and under HR's uh, uh, support and guidance, uh, we set up a, a, a plan if in fact we do have to implement it that is non-discriminatory, that's fair, and is addressing all the major issues that any HR department would have to address in any type of municipal government or any type of business of, of this size um, to make the necessary cuts where it is justified.
With that said, Ben, I'd like to move to uh, to approve.
Do I have a second?
Hey, sir, I think the motion was made first by Mr. Chavez.
Oh, okay. Um, mo- motion was made by Mr. Chavez, seconded by uh Councilman Fado. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item five, discussion, consideration and action on waiving the remittance of hotel motel occupancy tax for the period of ninety days. Ladies and gentlemen, this was uh something that, you know, I would like Henry to chime in on. Um, Ms. Norma Gonzalez and myself received an email uh from the owner of the Best Western in regards to the hotel motel tax uh that uh he's paying to the town. He had stated some, you know, financial woes in regards to uh water, uh, trash, uh, the garbage and everything and see if the town was offering any uh, any uh, um, you know, abatement or any uh, uh grace periods for him. And, you know, we told them no, that it was basically across the board, garbage was still collecting garbage, we're still providing water. Um, the only thing that we were doing was not shutting off, um, not assigning or uh, uh, including any late fees or disconnect fees. Um, and we weren't gonna be shutting anybody's water off if they didn't have the uh ability to pay. So that, that went across the board, but he was looking to see, um, you know, for the sake of staff and stuff, if he can get a break on that uh hotel tax. And I put it on the council agenda because it was already Friday and Thursday when we were looking at it. So I wanted to offer it as a discussion item. But as the weekend progressed and I had an opportunity to talk to that individual, um, it, it kinda looked less likely of something that i- i- I personally would, would move forward in supporting at the moment. But I'll kinda let Henry. But I'll kind of let Henry offer his legal take on it and, you know, he'll kind of. Explain a little bit on why. But Henry, I'll go ahead and give you the floor, sir.
Mayor, thank you, council members. What Mr. Baga is requesting, the owner of, one of the owners of the Best Western. The logic that I understood from reading his letter was he wanted a suspension of the collection of this hotel motel tax for ninety days. And his argument was based on having him be able to keep his employees on the payroll. And the mayor, I had discussed previously, is the logic doesn't necessarily apply with regard to this type of tax. For a couple of reasons, for a few reasons. First and foremost, it's a pass-through tax, okay? This is a six percent tax that gets passed on or taxed on to the hotel rate. Okay, it's not something that is paid by the, the hotel, the company, the owner of the hotel. It's passed through to the occupant of the room, okay? So, so that the fact of that being a hit on his income. Which he could use to pay his employees, that logic doesn't apply with regard to this tax. Second is actually it, it kind of affects him because. If we all look at the ordinance that was passed back in two thousand and eighteen, that's ordinance number twenty eighteen dash five one four, the one that. Imposes the hotel occupancy tax. It's a six percent tax. Five percent gets, gets passed on to the, to the town. And one percent is a, is, is a, gets, the hotel owner can keep as a cost for. Collecting the tax and forwarding it on to the town. So he gets to keep one percent of that tax for his, to pay for administration costs. So by him not wanting this tax imposed. Also doesn't necessarily help him because of that one, he's going to take a hit of that one percent, okay? The other. Reason that I don't think this applies here, or maybe his avenue, I should say, should be focused in a different. Path would be that the federal government, as you all are aware, they passed the CARES Act. Okay, the CARES Act has the paycheck protection program loans available that the judge, the mayor mentioned here a few minutes ago. Obviously, those funds have been exhausted, but my understanding is that they're passing, that. Congress is passing additional funding or has passed additional funding to continue funding those paycheck protection program loans. So if the logic of Mr. Baga is to keep his employees on the payroll. Then his avenue should be to apply for these, this program, the paycheck protection program loans. As opposed to asking the city to abate or suspend collecting this tax for ninety days. Which won't help him at all for the reasons that I said, that they get, gets passed through to the occupant. He may argue, you know, or somebody in his position may argue, well, look, by you not. Suspending this for ninety days, obviously the cost of me renting the room increases because of the cost of the tax. So I mean, that probably may be the only argument, only angle that I see as far as it affecting him. In being able to rent his rooms, but I don't necessarily think that's going to make that much of a difference on this six percent tax. I mean, if somebody's going to rent a room, they're going to rent a room. Whether that tax is imposed or not, in my opinion. So I wanted to bring that to your attention that, you know, I don't see that his logic here necessarily applies and maybe his. He needs to be directed to this other program that will help him alleviate his main concern of keeping his employees on the payroll. Doing it the way he's requesting, it won't accomplish that. That's all I have to say unless you all have any questions.
Thank you, Henry. And ultimately, I did have an opportunity when this email was brought in, you know, I did, you know, talk and approach. This item to Mayor Pro Tem Weeks, you know, just for his overall thoughts on it. And for me, I didn't have an issue putting it on the agenda because in reality, you know, though a lot of people may not understand. We can't even use the hotel motel funds, you know, for our general fund, for water or anything. I mean, it's specifically set aside for tourism and promotion to the town. But then again, I thought about it and I said, you know what? You know, once we're looking at coming out of these things and, you know, social distancing is being minimized. The restrictions are getting, you know, limited, you know, pretty much pulled back a bit. I think at this point, you know, the town, it would probably be in everybody's best interest for all businesses, including the hotel. If we do really make a big push to utilize those actual hotel and motel funds, whether it's getting billboards, marquees and stuff. And, you know, trying to promote some of the restaurants, some of the lodging and stuff here in town. Just to try and kind of help, you know, minimize any costs on their actual and in advertising and promotional material. And, you know, just see if we can help kind of get a leg up and a boost economically to, to our community. But I leave the floor open for any council members, Mr. Weeks, anybody else who'd like to comment?
Yeah, Ben, what I'll say is this gentleman had a misunderstanding. He thought that, hey, let's not do the six percent for the town and give it back to me for payroll. And like, like Henry said, it's a pass-through, it's not something that we even can, we can't do that. So what he was requesting, we can't do, we can't legally do. So I think it's kind of a mute point that, you know, and then one of the six percent, he gets one percent. So if we just decided to cut to six percent, he'd be down one percent. Instead of he being worse, a little bit worse shape than he was before. So I agree with what you said, let's use this money to go forward and get things going for the town when this thing pandemic gets done. And, and help him understand that this, if we, if we do this, we can't give you the money anyways, it's not ours to give.
Exactly. Any other comment from council, any? Comments?
To motion to not approve.
Would you, Mr. Paulo Maris, would it be ideal just to delete this item or? Well, okay, we'll go ahead and I'll go with Mr. Chavez. Yes, can you hear me, Henry?
Okay, I thought I had it on mute, I didn't have it on mute, okay, I apologize for that.
No problem. Would you prefer it denied, no action taken, deleted, what would be the ideal recommendation?
Mayor, let me just look at the agenda, see how it's worded, I'm trying to pull it up.
Says, discussion, consideration and action on a reduction of, sorry, on a discussion, consideration and action. On waiving the remittance of hotel motel occupancy tax for the period of ninety days.
Well, Mayor, what I suggest is you could either take a vote to see it'll be approved or not approved. Or, and that way, I suggested you do that so you can take it, it's basically a response back to, to Mr. Baga that the council considered it. They discussed it, they considered it and unfortunately they decided to, I assume, if that's the vote, they just deny it if, or if it gets granted.
Sounds good, sir, so I have a motion by, made by Mr. Chavez to deny approving. Or waiving the remittance of hotel motel occupancy tax for the period of ninety days, do I have a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
I have a motion seconded by Councilman Garcia, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Going on back to the table, gentlemen, we tabled item one, discussion, consideration and action on an ordinance to the town of Anthony. Disbanding the Planning and Zoning Commission and relegating the powers of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Back to the town council pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section two one one dot zero zero or zero seven seven E. Presented by Mr. Paulo Maris, floor is all yours, Henry.
Mayor, council members, you all may recall a while back. There was some discussion about the Planning and Zoning Commission and, you know, basically the Planning and Zoning Commission being plagued. I think it came up in the, in comments from the mayor and I don't recall whether it came up as an agenda item or if it was in the departmental reports. Section, but you all are probably, we may probably recall those conversations that the Planning and Zoning Commission's been plagued. With persistent member turnover and lack of quorum issues. I think that, that, if I recall correctly, that may have come up when you all appointed new, a new Planning and Zoning Commission members. A few weeks back. So basically, this item came up with the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on April first. And they unanimously considered and approved a recommendation to, to you all, to the town council. To disband the Planning and Zoning Commission for those reasons. I mean, just basically the administrative difficulties resulting from, you know, being plagued with the. The member turnover and lack of quorum. So basically, the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending that it be disbanded. It is bringing that recommendation here for you all to consider today. It had to be done in the form of a, of an ordinance, which if you see in your packet, there's an ordinance. Where it'll be disbanded, assuming that you all vote in favor of doing that. The ordinance calls for the disbanding or terminating of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then relegating those powers back to the town council in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code. In particular, section six two eleven point zero zero seven E. It, so if that occurs, what will happen is that the town council will serve as the Planning and Zoning Commission body. So you'll eliminate the Planning and Zoning Commission as it exists now. Reason this ordinance was done this way, just so that you all are aware, as opposed to making an amendment and removing all references. To Planning and Zoning Commission within the Anthony Municipal Code was. Was in the event in the future, let's say you all decide that you all want to move back to doing a Planning and Zoning Commission. Then we could just do another simple ordinance like this one. Relegating or giving those, that authority or empowers back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And at that point, obviously the mayor would appoint some commissioners and the town council would vote on those appointments. To approve or not approve those appointments. But basically, it's just an easy way of going back if you want to by doing it this way as opposed to amending. References in the municipal code to the town, towns, Planning and Zoning Commission. So I tried to make it as easy as possible, as efficient as possible to give you that flexibility in the future. Mayor, that's all I have unless you all have some questions.
Thank you, Henry. And as you guys know, you know, the reason we put this is because. Time and time again, we had individuals that were looking to move forward with projects with the town. You know, things that were just being stalled for too long unnecessarily, not even anything related to the projects. Just because of the fact that they couldn't get a forum to discuss the items. I think is a reflection of the town, it's unprofessional. You saw a lot of the hard work and effort that we put into putting the charter committee together, that goes down the drain. You know, planning and zoning and all the woes and everything and agendas and everybody that, that certain individuals have or had. And all we want to do is just, you know, streamline and establish accountability with, you know, moving things forward. As, as, as needed and as necessary in a timely manner. That's why, you know, I would wholeheartedly like for council to support this decision. We already have an obligation to this town, a desire to move it forward. And we've committed ourselves when we swore our oaths to handle and take all these matters seriously. So I think, you know, who better to be overhearing and looking at these things than, you know, council themselves? You guys, we meet twice a month, which could expedite a lot of these projects that have only been meeting monthly or have to wait every other month. For quorum issues and I just, I just think it's the best thing for us to move forward and continue this. And I like the way Henry put it together and put the verbiage for it. That way, in case the town does grow and we see the population increase and more individuals that are. Wanting to take a role and care about the community, want to step forward and volunteer their time and stuff. I think we can easily, you know, put something back together, but at this point in time, it's proved more problematic than helpful. So I would really like for council to move forward with supporting this, this item. Any questions, any comments?
Saying that we're going to be able to listen to it and vote on it on the same day?
They'll be able to present this stuff to, to council and whether we have it as a presentation, one meeting and then the action item on the following. I mean, it's all up to you guys, ideally depending on the project and the way it goes. You know, it's still going to go through all the processes, it's still going to go through Ron, our building inspector, code engineers and all that stuff. So ultimately, you know, it's going to come to us for approval. And of course, like always, you know, hopefully we go and move forward with the recommend, the recommendation from the professionals in those fields. You know, what, what route to take, but other than that, yeah, I mean, it'll come to our table and move forward with it from there.
And planning and. The disbandment of it?
Yes, sir, and following the proper protocols. Even though we could just move forward with it as an agenda item, because remember planning zoning was just a recommending, a recommending committee. Ultimately, the word came down to council when it came down to approving or denying or certain items. So they offered the recommendation to move forward with it. We were having issues establishing a quorum already with the newly elected appointed members. So, I mean, they knew themselves, you know, that it's. It wasn't really happening in the best interest of the town anymore.
If there's nobody else, I'd like to motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion on the table made by Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
A second made by Mr. Garcia to go ahead and disband the Planning and Zoning Commission. And relegate the tower, the powers of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Back to the town council pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section two one one dot zero zero seven, Section E, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, four zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Roll call, please. Mayor, ten weeks?
Yes.
Councilman Garcia?
Yes.
Councilman Chavez?
Yes.
Councilman Anfaro?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to departmental reports, streets. At this moment in time, I'll turn it over to Everett, I don't have anything to. Share at the moment, the only thing I will say is, we were supposed to get started on Kelwood from, on popular from Kelwood to Six. But we postponed that just temporarily until we got those amended items approved, which we did get those correct, Everett. And now they're going to move forward with construction or what was the lead date? Sorry, Everett, can't hear you, sir. Well, nothing. All right, well, we'll go from there, but basically, it was just pushed back an additional two weeks. They're still going to get started going on it, we, since we had Allied Baby and some other individuals, we needed to get with the school first. On getting that, their section covered. So I think Renee was going to be presenting that to the school board to see for approval. But that was just basically giving us a little bit of time to do that. And I mean, basically that's it, we are applying for the next CDBG grant. And like I said, no matter what's going on with this COVID stuff, what happens economically, whatever. We said in prior council meetings, we're not going to look at cutting out certain capital improvement projects due to finances. We'll make sure that we always budget those priority, that way, no matter what, even if times slow down. We still continue moving forward with our capital improvement projects. Anything else for streets? Parks and Recreation? Everett?
Yes, sir.
Okay, for the trees going back, we're going to start on May twenty, sir.
Something on mute though, Everett? Something on mute though, Everett? It's okay, Everett. I appreciate it, sir. Parks and Rec, the guys are right now uh, replacing some of the the irrigation lines um, at Triangle. Aside from the normal maintenance with the uh, painting and the the tree stuff that they did on the parks. Um, everything else has kind of been put on the back burner. We didn't move forward with the Wildcat project. Um, because we're trying to, you know, do some cost savings right now. And see how this COVID stuff starts to develop. If not, um, definitely, we can move uh, any monies that we were uh, budgeting. For the Wildcat project into the capital improvements for water and sewer. And then just let it carry over for the next year and if we do it next year, I mean, albeit, um, right now, we're just trying to cut overall costs. The guys did clean up Torres Santos Park uh, uh, up there up in the heights, but we did get some reports. Um, Everett was telling us that that fence that we put up up against the gentleman's wall to stop the uh, the foot traffic that was going. By the um, electrical substation and the well. Um, they're starting to bend the fence and push their ways through there again. So Everett's looking at completely closing it and maybe adding another little section of fence. Uh, to completely uh, close that little gap that's in between the rock wall and the fence and hopefully. We can get the owner's permission to do so. Um, but other than that. Parks are still not gonna be open regardless of certain things and things opening like that. Um, we're gonna keep our parks closed uh, for the moment. Individuals that are looking to exercise and walk around. I mean, you know, they definitely have uh, the Wildcat path to utilize. Um, since it's not necessarily a designated walking trail, um, but it is a sidewalk and people utilize it for walking. Uh, we'll let it be just that. Um, but other than that, uh, chief, um, uh, officer, Chief Abic, do you have anything for uh, police and fire?
Well, here recently with the um, with all this stuff going on, we've seen a huge increase in deep wise and narcotic related.
Yes, sir.
So we've seen, we've seen a huge increase in narcotic related um, arrest. Uh, basically, we've seen a lot of meth coming into our area. People, I guess they're thinking that we're not out there, but officers are still out there aggressively patrolling. Um, so they've been catching a lot of individuals uh, with meth. Also, we have had uh, thefts almost every day occurring at at the convenience store, so. We're asking uh, people to be more vigilant. We did have a, we had a press uh, a conference call this afternoon, but I think I let the mayor touch on that one, right, Mayor? I'll let you touch on that on your, on administration with the conference call that we have.
Sure.
Okay, so um, we, the officers have been out there aggressively. Educating the public on the stay at home order and the use of face coverings. So it is, is it is a challenge because it's like a revolving door. I mean, everything changes at one minute to another. The county put out their, their face covering ordinance and then with the modification that was suggested by by Henry. Uh, the the county did put it out on Friday, but yet here we are, Monday, the governor. Uh, put out other, other orders out there that are gonna take it to effect. May first, which are going to change that order dramatically. So we'll see where it goes from there. We have been out there enforcing uh, uh, codes. And we had the assistance of Ron. So Ron has been out there looking at several businesses, homes, people that are doing home improvements. So our officers have been staying busy with the help of Ron as well for all the quarter enforcement. Pretty much, that's about it.
Thank you, chief. Police and fire, we did have a conference call with a majority of the business owners and management here in town. Uh, in regards to the adopted face mask policy. But as you know, um, as of today in the afternoon, Governor Abbott um, is not gonna be enforcing that. So it's gonna be a challenge for us, because like we said, even though the rest of Texas is seeing their curb flatten. Here in El Paso, uh, good old fashioned El Paso, we're seeing the numbers exponentially rise and dramatically increase. So um, we're not gonna be issuing citations. We'll be posting up some videos updating people of that uh, probably tomorrow. Um, but at this point, you know, face masks are still optional and they can't issue citations for wearing them. So, you know, to not, you know, get into any unnecessary confrontation. We're just gonna go ahead and, you know, continue moving forward and trying to educate on reasons to wear them. But if people don't want to wear them, I mean, that that's pretty much it at that point. Um, going on to water and sewer, uh, Mr. Hawkins, are you able to speak at all? No?
I believe he is, so give me one second. Everett?
Can you hear me? As far as the water and sewer, things running fine. We had a little uh, um, glitch from the lab. Actually, we had a high B O D, not emailing on it. I also spoke with the representative of T C Q. Coming uh, for this issue, because they put us out of compliance. And the reason why uh, we should discussing it, we believe is actually the the lab. Lab actually made an error, because I cannot uh, super high on the on B O D numbers. But everything else was okay, so it's kind of, it's kind of iffy on the lab. So now T C Q's involved, just so you guys know. We might have a letter, but stating, you know, our violation, but like I said, I took, you know, I took, I handled it already and T C Q's aware as well.
And what's been going on, Everett, with, I saw that email from a concerned resident up in the heights about somebody taking samples from the water up there? Who's the one that's doing, is that our staff or or T C Q or who is it?
No, no, sir. And that that's uh, something I wanted to uh, some resident from thirty one thirty one uh, on Mira Drive. She had a concern, her last name is Mrs. Casas. And as a matter of fact, she had a concern, uh, because every time we uh, we have to do, it's a mandatory thing that I have to do on T C Q for flushing our hydrants every month. And she was concerned because it says uh, it puddles up after we open up the hydrant. And there's, um, she's got uh, small children in her house. She says after, you know, we. Have some water running down the street, she gets uh, the wasps and she's afraid, you know, they're gonna sting their uh, her kids. And I understand her concern, I can see that email that I forwarded you. Actually, what we're do, gonna do from now on, and that's what I thought, for the lady. We're gonna start to actually put in that water in the water truck and utilizing that water uh, in the Heights Park instead of just letting it go through the street and washing it down. And we we can actually grab a sample from the water coming up from the, from the water truck, so that's what other major that we're gonna do to uh. Actually resolve this issue from from the lady.
Thank you, Everett. I appreciate that, sir. Um, anybody uh, else moving on to courts, Mr. Palomares, anything? How did that first uh? Uh, WebEx or uh, online court go with you guys?
Mayor, and council members, it went great. Uh, it was very efficient. Uh, Sally, all the court staff did great, the officers. Uh, you know, she, they got everything taken care of administratively. They got us the complaints, the citations. It was the, it was an attorney court, so it was an attorney representing the defendants. So we tried to, the the court wanted to do that approach first to see how it went before we start doing pro se defendants. But it went great. I I, it was a Zoom meeting. Um, you know, it was, everybody was really happy with it.
That's good, that's good. Um, hopefully, we can continue moving forward with that like that. And if it's something that's working out, maybe we can. You know, start doing that uh, in the long term. Um, just to minimize any uh, unnecessary exposure to the judge and some of the court staff and stuff, but. Uh, that's good news for me. Um, moving on to uh, finance. Uh, you guys already heard uh, from Mr. Weeks and myself, um, with the uh, quarterly, uh, second quarterly budget review. Um, Benya, I'm being honest, did finish seventeen eighteen audit. Um, that was the time, uh, you know, when we had Mary Carter as the town clerk. Uh, Mary come out as a mayor and we had a bunch of uh, changes in administrative staff. Including, you know, Proteon Business Solutions coming in on the tail end of that. Um, once that whole fiasco, you know, unraveled. Uh, but they are, once they present to town uh, council. Within a week to two weeks, they're already gonna be hitting hard and going on eighteen nineteen. Which is still following under uh, a former mayor's administration, but at least with that. Um, we at least got, you know, certain people out of uh, that were no longer involved with the finances. Out and then uh, Wayne and these guys were able to take over uh, temporarily until. Until, you know, we got our own uh, people on board. But um, that's all we have to look at at finance. I'll follow up with Benya to see when he's gonna wanna uh, present uh, the audit. Um, to the town council and then we'll go ahead and post it online. Um, other than that, that's all we had to say.
Uh, I I didn't realize I was, I had muted myself during the talking about cutting hours, so I wasn't able to talk. But I just wanted uh, to kind of point out a few things and applaud you for taking the steps. A a couple of weeks ago to cut the hours back. I I think we need to do some more with our employees, like some refreshers. Uh, I'm just gonna say it, there's this sense of entitlement and there's this big misunderstanding. Uh, you know, we we, they they interpret the human resource manual how they want to interpret to their benefit. And um, it it's the strangest thing I've ever seen, especially in the last three years. How one person will ask three different people to try to get somebody to say something they shouldn't. Or interpreted how they want, but they all have the same end. Um, just so everybody knows, roughly three, three and a half weeks ago, the first week of April. We did a review before we did our review last week. Where we were already talking about cutting hours and looking at things and, and at that time, though, we didn't have March numbers. So I just wanted everyone to know that this is something that had been looked at and thought of. H R was involved even the week before that. So this is something that's been going on for about a month. And so I just really wanted to point that out and I and I think it's great that we supported and backed you and you put it on the agenda. Just as a more of a courtesy, i- i- if anything, but also to show and and we made the right decision and supported you. With the tough decision that you had to make and I hope that this opens some of our employees' eyes to the understanding of. You are the chief administrator of the town of Anthony. When it comes to day to day operations, you don't have to ask for permission to do what's right for the town as long as you can justify it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Um, moving on to administration, chief, I already talked about the uh, the, did I talk about the face mask meeting? Yes or no?
Yes, sir, you did.
Okay, I'm getting lost already in uh, all the discussion and stuff is getting late. Um, but basically, other than, under administration, you know, the things are changing. Governor Abbott issued uh, the new directives. Basically, um, you know, just so everybody uh, is aware in 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 small terms on the executive order. Is basically phase one begins Friday, May first. Retail restaurants, movie theaters, malls and state libraries and museums may start to open at twenty five percent capacity, okay? Now, in regards to us for enforcement, um, you know, we want to do education like chief talked about uh, with all the uh, uh, managers and business owners. Today during la- uh, the lunches, uh, uh, teleconference. Uh, but basically, um, you know, we, we want to make sure they are following those, so they do need to meet those uh. Occupancy uh, standards. Um, if not, you know, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll end up talking to them. But basically, you know, they open at twenty five percent capacity. Play areas, food court dining areas and interactive displays still have to remain closed. Outdoor sports may be played in groups of four or less and still must observe safe distancing. So I don't know how that's really gonna work out. That's why I still want to keep our parks closed. Because that's just gonna be too much gray area for us and I think we're gonna be spending necess- unnecessary time trying to police that, which we shouldn't, so. We're gonna keep our parks closed. Um, but then they did say public swimming pools, bars, gyms, hair salons, barber shops. Massage parlors, bowling alleys and video arcades and tattoo piercing studios still must remain closed. Nurses, nursing homes, state supported living centers, facilities, long term care facilities must remain closed to visitors. Um, unless they're providing critical assistance. And then no matter what, people should continue social distancing of at least six feet. Now, even though it's not mandated, they can still re, uh, you know, we still recommend wearing. Face coverings in public place and practicing frequent hand washing and most definitely, most definitely covering coughs. And this order is in effect at twelve oh one A M on Friday, May first. And like they said, Governor Abbott is not gonna uh, extend or anything the declaration. It'll end by the thirtieth, correct, chief?
That's correct, and that's actually for the stay at home emergency order only. So he's uh, he revised his order to read something else, so. Basically, the shelter in place, how people are calling it, he's letting it expire on the thirty. And which, if I read it correctly, I I, if I read the order, the executive order correctly, he's gonna even allow for um. Gatherings to start taking place.
And chief and Ben, um, you know, last week, Governor Abbott had a press conference. And he said, and he, well, it was ten days ago. And he said that we are trending down. Everyone is, and he pointed out specifically, except El Paso. So I'm just saying this because I wouldn't be surprised if, just like the state parks, and all the state parks are open in all of Texas. Except for El Paso, right? So I wouldn't be surprised if he comes out and and modifies something or or the judge talks to him. And and then there's gonna, and 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 says, okay, but these don't apply to El Paso, because our numbers keep going up. So I'm just throwing that out there.
I know there was a discussion with the, with the El Paso City Council, because they had those same issues. So I know their city attorneys were gonna reach out to the governor's attorneys. To try and ascertain to see if there was a way that the governor can do the exemption of certain counties. I know he did it already in his order. In his order, he says if there are less than fewer five cases of COVID in the county. Then at that point, the businesses can open at fifty percent capacity. So I know there is some room for it, but again, the attorneys for the city of El Paso, we're gonna reach out to them, see what they can find out.
And also, that's in in reference to the fact that I think there's like two hundred and fifty some counties in Texas, right? But like, two hundred of these counties are like very small, ba- you know, tiny population counties. You know, very, very, very rural. So, you know, eighty percent, it it looks like eighty percent of Texas. Doesn't, isn't having any issues, but eighty percent of Texas has ten percent of the people. So, yeah.
Right, so what am I, one of my uh, questions that was raised by during the press conference was. Um, how do you feel that Harris County just set out that uh, mask ordinance? So the governor's response was, it is recommended by my medical staff. That they wear face masks, but at this point in time, it's not mandated. And he furthermore went on to say, nobody will, in the state of Texas, will get issued a safety issue for not wearing a face mask. So again, we have to wait and see how that. Turns out with with the county of El Paso. But as far as now, I got with the mayor as soon as I heard the the statement made by the governor. And the mayor said, okay, we'll just continue with the educational purposes only with the with the face coverings.
Mayor, you mute?
I'm muting. Can you hear me? All right, um, and just like chief said, you know, um, it's still a developing thing. We had the same issue with the county when uh, Judge Samaniego issued his order. You know, we went and did it as a class C and then later on, his legal staff liked it and they went ahead. And made that uh, amendment to their ordinance to to give us some administrative authority on. Um, enforcement on some of those aspects. So I'm pretty sure and I and I do think, you know, with the way El Paso numbers continue to go up. I do think that um, you know, their legal department, you know, will reach out to Governor Abbott and I think some things might be amended and changed. But until then, you know, it's like we say, we go with the rule of the law of the land. Um, if it's what Governor Abbott says right now, until they say otherwise. Um, or the city does something different, you know, we're, we're just gonna continue to play by ear and and do the best that we can with education. And overall, just hoping that the uh, overall uh, general public. Adhere to the recommendations regardless of what rules are in place or not and just practice social distancing. And take uh, public health into priority right now. Anything else for administration? Anything from the council that they'd like to say, Mr. Weeks, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Alvaro, Mr. Chavez?
Just that people should protect themselves. It's basically common sense, you know? If you're running with people, wear a mask, uh, stay away and. What they say and I think we'd be okay, you know, just, that's the hardest thing, you know, people don't pay attention, they just do what they want and that's where we're at.
Sir, anything, anybody else, any other councilman? All right, I really want to thank you guys uh, for supporting me on these things. All right, I really want to thank you guys uh for supporting me on these things. I think, you know, moving forward, you know, the 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 more we continue to do this, I think uh overall, we're we're doing well, we're gonna be doing good. And, you know, regardless of, you know, what propaganda and stuff is going out there, um, I still look forward, guys, to getting together and getting the audits and everything done. Um, that way we can show, you know, and put a lot of these uh nays, not naysayers, but a lot of these rumors to rest about what we're doing as an administration. Um, we might, we might not all always agree on certain things. Um, but I think overall, uh our hearts are in the right place. And I think uh, you know, that's what matters. And, you know, we care about this community and we're gonna move it forward. So thank you all for supporting me moving forward uh with the staff. And then uh we'll get in and go from there, guys. Thank you very much. Um, the next regular council meeting is scheduled at six thirty P M on Monday, May eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Chavez, seconded by Councilman Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned at eight twenty nine P M. Thank you, guys. Peace.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Good night.